Good evening, Spokane. Welcome to our city council meeting for May 17, 2021. Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Council President Beggs.
Present.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
We have two proclamations this evening, and the first one is in honor of foster care families, and Councilmember Mum is going to read that, and I'm hoping we're joined by Scott Ferguson. But Councilmember Mum, go ahead.
Hi, dear. I am universally working later in the business section, so I just need to take a pass for a moment. I'll call that right up. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to EMS Week, and Councilmember Kinnear is going to read that, and hopefully we'll be hearing from Chief Schaefer.
Okay, thank you. The City of Spokane proclamation, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service which consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, educators, administrators, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gas pipe providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, behavioral health care, and support, and the members of emergency medical services teams engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas the members of the city's emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, as access to quality emergency care dramatically improving the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. Now therefore, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim May 16 through 22, 2021 as Emergency Medical Services Week in Spokane, and with the EMS strong theme, this is EMS, caring for our communities. We encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. And I don't see Mr. Schaefer, Chief Schaefer, but I would just add that during this week of week, this year of COVID, we've had opportunity to see exactly how vital our healthcare professionals are, especially our emergency folks. So there he is. Chief Schaefer, do you want to say a few words?
Well, I certainly would. Obviously, we're very appreciative of the support that we've got from all the community, and that's reflected in our elected leaders. And the trust that you put on us is incredible, and I hope we can do our best to live up to your expectations. And recognizing the people in the field, right now, the reason why we're catching me on the phone here is the system's really busy, and we've got a pretty large fire going on in District 8 right now, and trying to do all that coordination is during a pandemic and definitely a wild season that is looking us right in between the eyes with some pretty veracity. We're doing everything we can to live up to the goals and the aspirations, and the people in the field do that day in, day out, 24 hours a day, and they're just amazing. So thank you for the support, and thank you very much for this recognition.
Thank you, Chief Schaefer, and all your people. We really appreciate it. Councilmember Mum, I believe you have a proclamation for foster care families.
And I just want to mention before I start that Councilmember Wilkerson and I, for several decades, have worked to support the Junior League of Spokane, which really kicked off a great deal of support for foster families in our community, and the need is still there. So I thought I'd bring that up and recognize Councilmember Wilkerson and the work of the Junior League of Spokane that has for decades held the Foster Santa Breakfast and done many other things to support foster children and foster families. City of Spokane proclamation, whereas families serving as the primary sources of love, identity, self-esteem, and support are the very foundation of our Spokane communities, and there are over 800 children and youth in traditional kinship or specialized foster care who are being provided safe, secure, and stable homes, along with compassion and nurturing of foster and kinship foster families. And whereas there are over 400 dedicated licensed foster and kinship foster families in Spokane and Spokane County who often adopt foster children, and there are numerous individuals, as well as public and private organizations like Embrace Washington, who work to increase public awareness of children's needs who are currently in or leaving foster care. And whereas we honor the enduring and valuable contributions of foster, kinship foster, and adoptive parents, and so many others who make the foster care system the supportive network it is today. Now therefore, Nadine Woodward, the mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, does hereby proclaim May 2021 as Foster Care Appreciation Month in Spokane, and urge all citizens to take time to recognize that we can each play a part in enhancing the lives of children and youth in foster care. And did we have, was it Scott Ferguson here?
It doesn't look like he's on the line, actually. I don't think so.
To accept. Anyway, happy to read this proclamation and share with all the families in the community who do so much for foster kids.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember. And turning to boards and commission appointments, today we have an amendment to our resolutions where we appoint all the city council members to their various boards and commissions, and we're going to consider one that will make a change on our representation to the Association of Washington Cities Board from Spokane. It has been Councilmember Mum, but she will be transitioning to a higher office in the organization, which creates an opening, and Councilmember Wilkerson is on the docket to take that over at the end of June, at the end of our state convention for the Association of Washington Cities. So I don't know if you need to actually kind of read that or read the title. Madam Clerk?
Amendment to 2021 City Council Appointments, Request Motion to Substitute Attachment to Resolution 2021-3 Passed by City Council, January 11, 2021, With an Attached Update Replacing Councilmember Mum with Councilmember Wilkerson on the Association of Washington Cities Board.
So all those in favor of substituting the attachment, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay? Any abstentions? All right, congratulations, Councilmember Wilkerson, and congratulations, Councilmember Mum. Councilmember Mum, I should know this. I feel bad, but I want to know what your actual office is. Can you tell us what office you're going to be assuming?
I'm currently secretary for the Association of Washington Cities, which is 281 cities around the state, and this would be the position of vice president.
All right, congratulations. And I will
Thank you.
tell you that Spokane has really participated a lot more in AWC in the last few years, and it makes a difference in their policies. So it's great.
And that's because we have such a great council that supports it. So I encourage all of you to get involved. It's a great organization.
All right, that brings us to our legislative agenda and special budget ordinances.
Ordinance C 36048, Amending Ordinance Number C 35971 Passed by the City Council, December 14, 2020, and Entitled in Ordinance Adopting the Annual Budget of the City of Spokane for 2021, Making Appropriations to the Various Funds of the City of Spokane Government for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31, 2021, and Providing It Shall Take Effect Immediately Upon Passage, and Declared in Emergency and Appropriating Funds in, Ordinance C 36048, Combined Communications Building Fund from Unappropriated Reserves, $52,850 to Engineering Services, Same Amount. This action allows for the replacement of the building's roof, which will require an architectural and engineering assessment.
And I don't believe we have any requested community comment. Is there any council commentary? All right, then we'll have a roll call vote. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I, Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. The next one.
Ordinance C 36049, Fleet Replacement Fund from Unappropriated Reserves, $108,960 to Interfund Capital Commissioning, Same Amount. This action budgets for increases to vehicle outfit and commissioning costs.
Again, no community comment. Any council commentary? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I, Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay, that passes seven to zero. We added a special budget ordinance onto this evening's agenda to finance up to $500,000 of the fire department operating mobile and pop-up vaccine clinics, but there has been just emails going back and forth to add in a little bit of language to make sure that we had the proper account, because we just had a blank for the account where the money was going to, I think. So Policy Director McClatchy, can you get us up to date on what we would need to do to consider this tonight?
Thank you, Council President. We had some information from Chief Financial Officer Tanya Wallace to make sure that we had the correct budget codes, as correct as we can get for the moment with the new ARP fund being established, and she requested that we have some additional language in the header of the SPO to clarify council's intent to increase the fire EMS fund by $50,000, $500,000, excuse me, to allow for additional premium pay for some of our first responders who could be administering the vaccines. So I've circulated to council members and staff, and to Ms. Pfister, and to Mr. Perkins, potential substitute version, council could substitute by motion if that's appropriate, but it would be in order.
All right. So the Councilmember Mum.
I would move to substitute the CFO's amended language for the SPO and for the resolution, which keeps the intent of this, which is to provide up to half a million dollars to provide vaccines at mobile vaccination sites determined by the fire department into our
All right.
I'll second that.
All right. Any discussion about the motion to substitute the special budget ordinance? All right, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Nay? Okay, it's now substituted. Again, I don't think we have any community comment on it. We had that on our list of potential. Is there council commentary? Oh, sorry. I am reminded that since we just put it on, it hasn't been filed in on base long enough. We need to read it. So go ahead, Ms. Pfister.
So this is Ordinance Number C 36051, and Ordinance Amending Ordinance Number C 35971 Passed by the City Council, December 14, 2020, and Entitled in Ordinance Adopting the Annual Budget of the City of Spokane for 2020, Making Appropriations to the Various Funds of the City of Spokane Government for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31, 2021, and Providing It Shall Take Effect Immediately Upon Passage, and Declaring an Emergency. Whereas subsequent to the adoption of the 2021 Budget Ordinance Number C 35971 is above entitled, and which passed the City Council, December 14, 2020, it is necessary to establish and make changes in the appropriations of the American Rescue Plan Fund and the Fire EMS Fund specifically to increase funding to the Fire EMS Fund by $500,000, with a transfer from the city's new ARP fund, which changes could not have been anticipated or known at the time of making such budget ordinance. And whereas this ordinance has been on file in the city clerk's office since today, now therefore the City of Spokane does ordain Section 1, and in the budget of the general fund and that of the American Rescue Plan Fund, the following changes be made: From new ARP fund to allocations transferred out to fire EMS, $500,000; from new ARP fund to fire EMS fund contractual services, $500,000. Section 3, it is therefore by the City Council declared that an urgency and emergency exists for making the changes set forth herein, and such urgency and emergency arising from the need to start up five mobile rapid vaccination families at city fire stations to more rapidly provide COVID-19 vaccinations to the general public, and because of such need and urgency and emergency exists for the passage of this ordinance, and also because the same makes an appropriation, it shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its passage.
All right. Any council commentary? Councilmember Stratton.
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that I know in the past couple weeks, the community conversation has been that the COVID vaccines are slowing down, and they can't get people, enough people, to use up all the vaccines that they have at certain sites. But why I think this is such a good idea, and I thank Councilmember Mum and Councilmember Wilkerson for working on this, is because sometimes we have to go where people are. We have to meet people in their neighborhoods. And for some of the neighborhoods in my district, having vaccines available at a fire station, if that brings in 10 additional people to get their shots, it's going to be worth it. And so I think it's, while some members in the community are saying, we've got enough of the vaccines, we don't have enough people giving them, I say this is an opportunity for us, our constituents, where they're at, in their neighborhoods, at fire stations, which is just a cool thing anyway to go to. They trust their firemen, and I think that this is a good idea, and hopefully, we will see numbers of vaccinations going up in some of the neighborhoods where they're lower. So thank you both for your work on this.
Other comments? Councilmember Wilkerson, that was you?
That was me. Thank you. You were quick on the draw. I just wanted to say, you know, I am excited about this opportunity also. This has been unprecedented. You know, we are literally in uncharted waters, and we know that our recovery is based on the number of people who are vaccinated. And I consider it an investment in our people and in our community, so I am in total support of this. And I've been jokingly calling her the vaccine queen, Councilmember Mum. Thank you for really leading the charge and bringing us along with you.
Councilmember Mum. Oh, shoot. Councilmember Mum.
Thank you. Well, thanks, everyone. I appreciate the support. But I also want to say, this is really the community's chance. And I think of it kind of like we've been running a relay for over a year, and the baton is now being passed to us here at the city. The federal government did what they could, the state government did. Now it's time for Spokane to take the baton and get us across the finish line. So I'm excited about partnering with the health department, partnering with the fire department, partnering with our neighborhood councils. I hope all our city council members can find a time to go to one of these vaccination clinics and support it and promote it through our social media, work with the mayor's office, and get the campaign. And work with the school districts. Betsy, or Councilmember Wilkerson, that was a great idea, to get the school district involved, because we can now, in some cases, give vaccinations to children down to the age of 12, and this will help them with school and things that are happening this summer. And so I just think this is the big push. We are at the final end of the race, and let's just take that baton, and City of Spokane, let's go for it. Let's run, and let's win.
Councilmember Kinnear.
So it appears that we just got an update from Mr. Inzosi. I don't know if you want to read that into the record.
Those are some new numbers.
Okay.
Yes, they are.
So we're going to have to substitute those numbers.
I think the Councilmember Mum, possibly, if she can see those numbers, she could make a motion to amend it to encompass
I'll move to amend. I'll move to amend the code numbers from 1425-99999 ARP Fund, Unappropriated Reserves, 99999, to 1425-35166 ARP Fund, 97117-80101, Transfer Out to Fire EMS, $500,000; from 1970-35166 Fire EMS Fund, 99999-39700, Operating Transfers In, to 1970-35166 Fire EMS Fund, 22200-54201, Contractual Services, $500,000.
Is there a second? Will someone second that amendment?
Second.
And I emailed it to Ms. Pfister, so she has it. All right, any discussion about the latest amendment? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Nay? Any abstentions? Okay. We're still considering, then, the amended version, thanks to Mr. Inzosi for battling through his computer update to get us those latest numbers. Any other commentary? All right, I'll just say
I'll just say
Just a second. I'll say that I appreciate, in some ways, how fast this is coming together, and several people in the administration have been working hard with that. I know Mr. Perkins has already found a few initial locations, and we don't know if we're going to need all the money, but we're going to make sure that we have plenty, so that will not be the issue. And as Councilmember Stratton mentioned, some people say, well, they're not, the clinics are not full where they are, so why should we do that? But the truth is, we know we're behind on how many people are vaccinated in our community, and that if we're really going to be able to reopen fully, we're going to have to try every strategy. And this seems like a good strategy to try, and we'll do it. We'll open it up, see if it works, and if it doesn't, we don't have to leave them open if no one's coming. But I also agree that people have a particular special trust in their fire departments. And so I'm hoping there'll be a whole batch of people we'll get, and we'll get to that 70% even faster. So I appreciate everyone's work on it, from the administration and the council, and the future work it'll be. And with that, we'll have a formal roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I, Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. And why don't we do the resolution that we added on the same topic, if you want to read that?
Resolution Number 2021-41, A resolution supporting the fire department's establishment of mobile COVID-19 vaccination sites at fire stations and other locations throughout the City of Spokane, whereas many professional City of Spokane firefighters are also paramedics capable of administering COVID-19 vaccinations, and whereas the U.S. Centers for Disease Control and Prevention now recommends everyone 12 years of age and older receive a COVID-19 vaccination, and whereas the CDC says widespread vaccination is a critical tool to help stop the pandemic, and whereas making the vaccination freely available and easy to access is the only sure way we can control the spread of the virus and move forward into full economic and health recovery, and whereas although nearly 40% of the population of Spokane County has received at least one vaccine shot, common estimates are that a vaccination rate of nearly 70% is needed to ensure that our community is sufficiently protected against a recurrence, and whereas Governor Inslee's most recent guidance provides that full reopening will occur on June 30, although it could happen sooner if 70% or more residents get at least one vaccination dose, and whereas Spokane's firefighters are well positioned to move throughout the city's various neighborhoods to provide vaccinations to people where they are, quickly, efficiently, at no cost, and by fully trained and trusted first responders in cooperation with the Spokane County Health Department, now therefore be it resolved that the Spokane City Council hereby approves and supports the establishment of the Spokane Fire Department's Mobile Rapid Vaccination Program as a way for us to recover rapidly from the economic, social, and cultural effects of COVID-19.
All right, there's no community requested commentary on that. Any further council commentary? All right, seeing none, very closely related to the last one, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I, Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes seven to zero. That gets us to one final reading of an ordinance.
Ordinance C 36047, Relating to Parking Municipal Codes, Amending Spokane Municipal Codes, Sections 8.02.065, 8.02.083, 12.068.040, 16.8.61.550, 564.567.570, 5703.787, Adopting New Chapter, Spokane Municipal Code 16.8.05.06.07, and a new section 16.8.04100 to Chapter 16.8.04 of the Spokane Municipal Code, and repealing Spokane Municipal Code, Section 16.8.04.01, 0.02, 0.03, 0.04, 0.05, 0.055, .060, .070, .080, 16.8.61.381, 560, 561, 562, 563, 565, 566, .5701, 5702, 5704, 5705, 5706, 5707, 5708, 575, 577, 581, 582, 589, 590, 5902, 5990, 5910, 5914, 5916, 5918, 5921, 5922, 5924, 7090, and setting an effective
All right, well, there was, you can tell by how many code provisions are changed how big this ordinance actually is. This was the result of a lot of work by our parking department and consultant, based on a parking study, basically updating the entire parking code. Not that everything was getting changed substantively, but it was being organized more simply, and a few things were being changed. We don't have any community commentary requested. Are there any council comments? All right, I have a couple comments. Among other things, one of the main things this does is adopts a new strategy for on-street parking, which is about 15% of the parking in downtown, where it is going to adjust the rates of meters based on demand. The original proposal from our consultants and the administration was to change the highest rate from $2.40 an hour to $5 an hour potentially. We had a lot of back and forth on that, and We had a lot of back and forth on that and convinced folks that it should only go from $2.40 an hour to a maximum of $3. So instead of over 100% increase, it'd be a 25% increase at the most, if that happens. That won't happen at every meter. It'll just be in order to get the demand and supply. That's the main thing that I was concerned about over many months and years in discussing it, and I appreciate staff getting that handled, and this should be easier to both enforce and administer, and it goes along with other changes that we're making, including new kiosk infrastructure and license plate reader vehicles, so that we can enforce the overstay where some people are taking up spaces for longer than the two hours in the downtown than they're allowed, thus depriving other people of an easier parking spot. So without further ado, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero. That brings us to a hearing. And it looks like we have Eldon Brown here. Mr. Brown? Oh, well, go ahead and read it, and then we'll have Mr. Brown.
H1A, Vacation of Scenic Boulevard between 27th Avenue and 29th Avenue, as requested by Dave Dupree. H1B, First Reading Ordinance, C.36050, vacating Scenic Boulevard between 27th Avenue and 29th Avenue. Further action is deferred on the First Reading Ordinance.
All right. Mr. Brown, take it away.
Good evening. I'll try to pull up the map here. Okay. The applicant's requesting vacation of Scenic Boulevard from basically one lot south to 27th Avenue to 29th. The goal is to actually pretty much owns every lot along both sides of the road there, except for one down here at the very southwest end on the south side of Scenic at 29th, which is owned by Avista, but they're in agreement with the vacation also. The applicant really wants to just build one house, so he needs to really aggregate all these parcels when he gets all set and done, and he'll need a well in the septic tank to accomplish that. We did take a look at it. We do not need this actual right-of-way as part of our grid system for the streets. We intend somewhere down the line to run Scenic Boulevard into either 26th or 27th and down H Street, over to 27th, 8th, or 9th, to get over to Assembly Street. That's our long-term plan. So we would recommend vacation to this. There are no utilities in that right-of-way, and so we would recommend approval of vacation subject to conditions. Two basic conditions we have would be aggregate all the parcels, and the applicant needs to pay for the assessed value of the property, which is just slightly over $14,000. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right. I'm not seeing any, and I noted from email traffic that you answered the concerns of somebody in the area that was worried that they were impacted, but they weren't, so thanks for doing that, Eldon.
Yeah.
There's no community commentary, so let's have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and I. Councilmember Burke.
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero. We have two people signed up for open forum. The first is Marcia, and if you're there, Marcia, if you want to hit star three and raise your hand electronically. Are they on the line? Okay. Okay. All right. Well, we'll go to Nicolette Ockletree, if you're one of those people, if you want to raise your hand electronically by star three. All right. Good evening, Nicolette. If you want to go ahead and introduce yourself, you have up to three minutes to testify.
Last week, the items on the legislative agenda were moved to the consent agenda. As such, those items were voted on by council during the briefing session, and the legislative session was canceled. This action eliminated the opportunity for public testimony on those legislative agenda items, and it eliminated opportunity for public testimony during open forums. No in-kind alternative or live virtual public testimony on these items, nor open forum were made accessible to the public. I understand a citizen can still email or call council with their opinions about these legislative agenda items. However, it's my belief that this form of communication is not truly the same in nature as public testimony on legislative agenda items and open forums. Transparency, accessibility, and active public engagement are crucial for a well-functioning local government. If, in the future, the entire legislative agenda is being moved to the briefing session, then those legislative items ought to allow for public testimony during the briefing session, and open forum should be held at the end of the meeting, just as it would be held during the legislative session. Technical logistics for receiving public testimony during a briefing session should be minimal, and although I do not believe there are any nefarious reasons for city council moving the legislative agenda items to the consent agenda, this action could theoretically, in future instances, be abused and used to prevent the public from being able to testify. I hope that you take this into consideration and realize, in the long run, it's healthier for our working local government to be engaged as such. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nicolette. And there is perhaps one other person on the line, whoever you are, if you want to hit star three and find out who you are. Go ahead and unmute them. All right. If you called in and you would like to speak at open forum, if you could let us know who All right. I guess we don't know. So with that, I think that brings us to the end of our business this evening, and next week, we are, we only had one item on our legislative agenda of a franchise agreement for some internet service, I believe, and we did move it to 3:30, but we discussed today at our 3:30 briefing to see if we might be able to figure out how to get public comment in those rare circumstances where we do that. So we're working on that. We'll see if we get a solution on that, so stay tuned, because the challenge will be the sign-up an hour before, and whether people are even looking to see the sign-up. But just be on the lookout for that on our city council webpage if you're interested in commenting on that one issue next week. But with that, everyone, please take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of someone else. We are adjourned.